We'll move right into the agenda for the city of Prattville Tuesday, December the 20th, 2011, 6:06 PM. If you will please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you bow with me, please? Our most gracious heavenly father, as we celebrate the Advent season, waiting for the celebration of the coming of the Christ child, we ask that you be with everyone in this community and the families they represent. Bless us, dear lord, as you have in the past. Help this body to make decisions that will benefit the people of the city of Prattville. Guide us and direct us in your name, Jesus. Amen. Madam clerk, will you call the row, please?
Councilman Striplin?
Here.
Councilman Wood?
Here.
Councilman Argo?
Here.
Councilman Miller?
Here.
Councilman Reniger?
Here.
Councilman Bowles?
Here.
Councilman Fink?
Here. We'll call the meeting to order. Before we get into the approval of the minutes and the character moment, or the character trait of the month, I would like to introduce to the public our new city clerk who is joining us officially in our first official meeting tonight, Ms. Kathy Dickerson. Welcome, Kathy. We're delighted to have you in the Prattville family. The character trait of the month is benevolence, pursuing the good in others. That's very appropriate for the Christmas season. Fellow councilmen, you have received copies of the minutes from the December the 6th meeting. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller during discussion about the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving these minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. At this time, we will open up the meeting for comments from persons that would like to address any item on the agenda tonight. I believe Mr. Perez is first. Mr. Perez?
Are you sure now?
Do I gotta say my name one more time?
Please do.
Jose Perez, Harley Brooks, on Jose Cantina in Pine Levee, Jose Cantina right here in Prattville.
Thank you, sir. What can we do for you?
Okay. What I was gonna say, going back to the penny issue, I think that we should keep it so we can go ahead and keep taking the city forward. I've been running two businesses, and every day, every day that people pay, they got like 30 cents left, 2 cents left, 9 cents left, they always say, keep the change. You see, right here, I got over $8 on penny that people always told me, Mr. Perez, keep the change, I don't want it back. So I don't think if one penny is gonna help us to get the city forward, I'm in favor. If we don't want it, then we can be another Birmingham in bankruptcy and be screwed. So let's try to do something. One penny, I don't think is gonna hurt nobody. If somebody can afford a one penny to help to get the city forward, tell them to go to Salvation Army. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Perez?
Like I said, look, I just made it from 4 o'clock to now. Take the penny, we don't want it, keep the change.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
What was that? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to come before the council and discuss anything that's on our agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing no hands, mayor, we'll move on to your report. Do you have a report tonight?
Yes, and if you'll indulge me a little bit, we have a couple of guests here, and one of them is Sid Thompson, representative from the county, and I think she wanted to say something, she wanted to address the city council up here and myself, so she'll still.
Oh, me?
Yeah, I won't leave the mic, I take real loud. I just came by, we had our meeting tonight, and had a short meeting, I wouldn't stop by and wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, I hope it'll be a good year for you, and y'all.
Merry Christmas to you, commissioner. Glad to have you with us.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, and also in the back corner over here, we have our state representative, Paul Beckman, and I know he's right lately, he's been a regular visitor of ours, so thank you for being here tonight also. But...
Would our representative like to say something since he's here?
Well, you know, I guess it's hard for any politician to not come up to the mic when they have an opportunity, so...
Just covering your back, mayor.
I'm here tonight for Resolution Number 7. Mr. Argo will be presenting it, and my idea is to keep the city whole and reference to the reapportionment, and so I'm here for that, but I'm also here to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We need to have a new, a good year going into 2012, and we will be doing the reapportionment, so we need all the help we can get to stay whole, and that is my agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Beck. Mayor?
Well, I'm gonna take his lead on that one. I also was gonna ask the council to move forward on that because I truly believe that it is in the city of Prattville's best interest, and also the river region, for the city of Prattville to stay whole within District 88. And so I do applaud him for coming forward and encouraging us to move forward on this, and this will just actually help give a little bit of ammunition or encouragement to the body who's gonna be choosing on that rezoning of that. But if you can, please move forward on that, and we'll just see how they work that out, and hopefully it'll be the best for all of us. I'm gonna work backwards a little bit since I did start on number 7 there, I'm gonna move to resolution, or I'm sorry, Agenda Number 5, Agenda Item Number 5. That involves the ambulance contract with the county, and we have been working with them on the ambulance contract and also the jail contract. And the county, and we're waiting on the county right now to give us some more figures, up-to-date figures on the jails, jail contract, and I know that they want to tie both ambulance contract and jail contract together at one meeting, so if you sow mine, if you'll hold that, we can move forward on it after the 1st of the year, but whatever the council decides to do on that. There again, moving backwards, Agenda Item Number 2. I believe what you guys have before you is an extension of the one penny with a twist, new little twist to it about dropping it down to a half penny for the next budget cycle, 2013. One thing that I'm really hoping for is that maybe we can move forward with the complete penny extension through 2013 budget cycle, through September of 2013. And I'm standing up here asking for that. Initially, I should say, it was a part of the first five-year plan that I had presented to the council. It was, you know, we've had so many different variations and different timelines, but for a more complete fiscal recovery, it is my belief that we do need this penny extended through the complete 2013 budget cycle. If you amend it, it's not for this mayor, it's not for this council, it's for the next council or the next administration, whoever that might be. It might be eight new people sitting up here, it might be all eight of us coming back if everybody decides to run. I know I'm gonna be running for mayor, but it's not for us here today, it's for the next quadrillion. And I just truly feel that if we, the financial strength that we are in currently, if we do not give the next administration the full financial support that it needs, it will not be able to have the full recovery that I think that we're desperately moving in the right direction toward. So if you can, please move forward with Agenda Item Number 2, and if you see fit, do amend it to cover us through the complete budget cycle of 2013, which is September the 30th of 2013. That's something I truly believe that is needed for this city. The citizens that I have talked with day in and day out personally, telephone conversations, and also emails, the general population is that understanding is that we do need this penny, they do understand the need for it, they do see that we're making improvements, that we are moving in the right direction, and they are behind it as a group. But if you can, think about that, consider that, and amend it as necessary. On Agenda Items Number 13, 14, and 15, is to authorize a overtime payment for our police officers for various functions, mostly parades and fund runs and stuff like that, and that is something that we have talked about, I have brought up before the council. I've also, a few weeks ago, placed in your boxes a CD disc, trying to be a little on the green side, cut down on paper usage, but it gives you some information that we have gathered from various cities around. It's information about management of parades and fund runs. Hope you've had time to look this information over, but if not, over the Christmas holidays, if you have a little extra time in there, I know it might be pretty difficult with the busy schedules that you have, but if you can, look it over, because after the 1st of the year, I'll be asking promoters, managers, and organizers of these types of events to come together as committee and come back with a recommendation to this council as a remedy to help curb our overwhelming expenses that the city has been incurring on these. I do see that these events are quality-of-life events for us, they're great fundraisers for various events, for different organizations, but as the council and I have really found out since we have not passed a budget as yet, to what degree that these different fund runs and parades and so organizations, what kind of drain that they actually have on the police department's budget, and also the fire department in certain instances. But we will be pulling a committee together on that and looking further into that, and I hope that the council will be able to meet during some of those meetings and have a little more input on that. That's pretty much all that I have to talk about on this agenda. I do want to go ahead and just try to be brief, and sometimes that's a little difficult for me, but just pretty much just want to say, gentlemen, you know, it's been a wonderful year for me. There's been a lot of highs and lows throughout my life and this past year, and I have really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed serving up here with you guys, it's been a ride beyond belief for me. We have done so much reorganization, not only here, but in my prior life, in the small business I was affiliated with, I had to go in and do some reorganization over there, but we're also doing a lot of cross-training, we're doing a lot of multitasking like it's never been done before. Over the last 10 months, we've reduced our costs and increased our revenues, but we still have a ways to travel for our full financial recovery. Our department heads and city employees have also been on the same ride. I cannot express the gratitude that I have for them. Without them, we would not be seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, nor we'd be able to have the perseverance through this economical storm that we've been having. So thank you, city employees, thank you, citizens of Prattville, and I hope every one of us have a blessed Christmas and a safe New Year. And that's the end of my report. Mr. President?
Thank you, mayor. Is there any questions or comments for our mayor at this time? Councilman Miller?
A couple of different questions on the different items that you mentioned, mayor. On the one penny sales tax, your preference, because I think I heard you say through the 2013 budget year, so your preference, I just want to make sure I understand clearly what your preference would be.
My preference, and I actually have it written down over here, because I know what some of the council rules are, but, so I do have it in...
Just what's your preference?
Through September 30th of 2013.
A penny?
A penny extension, yes, sir.
Okay. And then the other question is about the ambulance contract, because we've sort of kept rolling that forward, you know, multiple times, so I guess my question would be, what is the downside of actually going ahead and moving forward with that tonight and getting it behind us?
I just think that it'd be respectful to the county commissioner for us to wait until they have their document ready.
Their Metro Jail document, but they're really sort of two separate business deals, even though I think I'm following your logic, they're still standalone discreet business deals, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the last, I would say, you know, I applaud you in terms of moving forward with getting some sort of a policy on the different fundraisers that end up being a cost to the taxpayer in the city to support them, and I agree 100% that that is a quality-of-life thing, and they're important parts of the community, but at the same time, I think we've all sort of realized that they are snowballing, and, you know, case, a good illustration of that is there's a real move now to go from 3Ks and 5Ks to half marathons. Again, all good causes, but there is a price incurred by the city, so I applaud you for moving forward with that, and I would encourage you, begin with end in mind, and in particular, have a deadline for when you want a deliverable, a policy that we can consider, the council can consider, so that it doesn't sort of become a never-ending story. And I know we've had a lot of stuff on our plate, but I think that's one that really is important because it's gonna continue to grow the runs in particular, I think, in my mind, it's sort of moved up there with the golf tournaments. They used to be the fundraiser of choice, and they're a good one, and they're still doing that, but that doesn't draw nearly on the city's resources, and that's sort of migrated for a lot of reasons, for a lot of nonprofits, public and private, to the runs that do impact our city workforce and create a cost. So I would just encourage you to move forward with that and also to have a firm deadline when we want to bring that to closure. And that was it.
Well, I do look forward to moving forward on that, and there again, it's something that the council will definitely have to be acting on, but yeah, and I do applaud all the organizations who have stepped up to the plate with these different various events, because as I mentioned earlier, and as you did too, it's a quality-of-life, it's just one way for Prattville to be Prattville, but sometime, some point in time, we do have to be a little realistic about it, and that's the approach that we're looking for.
Any further questions or comments for the mayor at this time? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Call on Mr. Mosley now for the report on the status of the city's finances. Mr. Mosley, good evening.
Good evening. You have before you the revenue and expense reports that I provide every month. Starting with the revenue report, you'll see it's pretty similar to last month, not a whole lot of changes on that. The big thing to look at is in the bottom right-hand corner, we are up 40.48% in revenue from last year, which is a very good thing. Those are, the increase is kind of spread out among a lot of different areas on that. If you flip over to the expense report, as you flip through there, you'll notice that just about every single department has spent less this year so far compared to last year. Any of them that don't are usually in the benefits area due to insurance claims and stuff like that, or if there was a reorganization, salaries would be higher in some of those. Bottom line on the expenses, operationally, just on operating expenses alone, we've spent $567,000 less this year than last year, and that's the first two months of the year. So we're off to a great start, heading in the right direction for another great year. And another update, this is not, this does not really pertain to November, it's more December, but we have already paid the first payment on the bridge loan, it's $500,000. Another payment will be made probably this week, which will leave just $1 million left, two more payments, so...
Any questions for Mr. Mosley? Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mosley, the next bridge loan is due what month?
The next big loan payment that we've got...
Big loan payment.
Is in May.
May of 2012, right?
Yes, sir.
And we won't be able to pay that bridge loan if there's not a extension of the 1 cent. We won't be able to pay it without...
More than likely, we'll have to take another bridge loan. It is possible that we could scrape the funds together, but it's not super likely. But it's not out of the realm of possibility, but I wouldn't bank on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosley at this time?
This is two months, right?
Correct.
Thank you. I'm sorry. So that, the top right-hand, that 33 is 16, is twice that?
On the revenue?
Yeah.
No, because the... Yes, actually it is.
Okay. I know you got the rears and collections on some of them, but that's, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosley? Thank you, sir. Very good report. Nice to have good news starting off the new year. We'll get into reports from council on special committees. Councilman Striplin?
No report.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
No, sir.
Councilman Miller?
No.
Councilman Bowles?
No, sir.
Councilman Fink?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing no reports, we'll get right into the agenda. First item is a resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Mr. Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. The properties are the vacant lot at the corner of Quail Run and Deer Trace and 434 Water Street. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or private contractors listed in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the city of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the city council following their removal. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fink has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion pertaining to this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like signs? Seeing none, resolution is adopted. Second item is an ordinance to amend City Code Division 2 Sales Tax, Section 38-92, Paragraph C, imposition of certain sales and use taxes. Councilman Striplin, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Being ordained that the City Code Division 2 Sales Tax, Section 38-92(c), is hereby amended as follows. Section 38-92(c), imposition of limited duration tax. In addition to the taxes set forth in 38-91 and Section 38-92(a) and (b), there shall be an additional 1% tax levied under Sections 38-91, 1, 2, and 6, commencing on the 6th day of May 2011 and ending on the 31st day of December 2012. In addition to the taxes set forth in 38-91 and Section 38-92(a,b), there shall be an additional 1/2% tax levied under Sections 38-91, 1, 2, and 3, excuse me, 1, 2, and 6, commencing on the 1st day of January 2013 and ending on the 30th day of September 2013. A, that the tax collected under the Section 38-92(c), after deductions for expenses of collection, shall be expended only for existing debt service of the city of Prattville. For the purposes of this ordinance, the term "existing debt service" shall mean debt service of the city of Prattville owed on the date of passage of this ordinance. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Striplin has moved this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. By point of order, since this is an ordinance that was just introduced, the ruse will have to be suspended or be carried over to our next meeting.
So moved.
Councilman Argo has moved for suspension of the ruse. Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second, though? Councilman Fink. Seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the ruse? All those in favor of suspending the ruse signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? It's unanimous. The ruses are suspended, and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any discussion about this proposed ordinance? Councilman Wood?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to offer an amendment. I'm gonna go back on something that I said I wouldn't do again, listening to the mayor talk and sitting up here thinking to myself, and I'm in total agreement with him that this tax needs to be through 2013. As you all know, several meetings ago, I put the identical resolution up there that he spoke of, and unfortunately, it did not get a second. I hope the minds have changed this time. As a matter of fact, I feel strongly that this tax really needs to be in place for the next four-year cycle for those coming aboard, but I just don't think there's enough votes up here to pass it. But I am gonna put this amendment before you again, but I believe it's the right thing to do. My amendment, Section B, I've written it out according to our rules, there shall be an additional 1% tax levied on the Sections 38-91, 1, 2, and (b), commencing on the 1st day of January 2013 and ending on the 30th day of September 2013. The chair offered that as a amendment.
Okay, you've heard the amendment posed by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment? Councilman Bowles?
I am in agreements with our mayor and Councilman Wood that what's gonna happen, it's taken this council three years to understand where we are and wrap our head around this thing in three years. If we took it like we were looking at doing for, to have it basically end on the December 31st, we were giving the new council and the new mayor exactly three months to wrap their head around our problems that we have created as a board, and it's not right to ask the people running for this position or the people already presently serving on this board to have three months to make a decision that big that impacts every one of you. So that's the reason I will be supporting this tonight, and that's the reason I second it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bowles. I'm going to refer this amendment to legal counsel and make sure that it's in the proper If I read that amendment correctly, we're adding an additional penny on top of the one we already have. I just want to make sure that it says what we want to do. Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. While Mr. McDowell is looking at the amendment, I do want to say one thing. Actually, what we're doing is we're giving the new mayor and new council very clear guidelines on what we expect them to accomplish. That is, they get the full penny through December 31st, 2012, so they get three months of the full penny, and then on January 1, it drops to a half cent, so they get nine months of a half cent. So they get a full year of additional revenue, but we give them very clear instructions that we expect them, whoever they may be, to get the financial house in order and continue on the path that this council and this mayor has set the city upon, and so I don't, I'm not disputing what Mr. Bowles says, all I'm saying is that they do get a full year of revenue. It just drops to a half cent, so they need to budget and they need to plan and spend accordingly. So I hope the council will defeat the amendment, that we will set a clear tone that we're going to wean ourself off the additional tax, and that we pass the ordinance as it is proposed by the council president. by the council president. Thank you.
Any further discussion while our legal counsel is reviewing the proposed amendment?
Point of clarification?
Yes, sir, Mr. Wood.
I'm gonna make sure that everybody understands that's B line 16 on this amendment.
Okay.
And what that does, instead of going to point five, it just continues and goes one cent.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that legally we were correct on that. Okay, the amendment is before us and has been seconded. Is there any other discussion about the proposed amendment? All those in favor of the amendment as proposed signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? It's defeated three to four, the amendment. The ordinance is back before us as it was introduced. Is there any further discussion about this proposed ordinance? Councilman Miller?
Yes, my question might be for Mr. Mosley, but the line 20 that referenced about that for the purposes of this ordinance, the term "existing debt service" is what this additional sales tax covers? Is that really, is there really any substance to that statement? And I guess what I mean is, do we have enough debt that it's going to be higher than the amount of tax that, revenue that'll be generated from this increased tax, such that we really are just supplanting city funds that otherwise would go to debt service and would have to go to debt service? So is that just really?
Well, I mean, our debt is more than what this will provide, if that's what you're asking, our debt service payments.
Right. So is it, and I'm trying to think through the slide, you help me, because you're quicker on numbers than I am, and what goes where in terms of city finances, but we gotta pay the debt anyway. So this amount, that would only be an issue if the amount of revenue collected from this additional sales tax exceeded our debt obligation.
Correct. But it's setting us up so that later on down the road, if we decide to extend it or wherever else, then we aren't using that money for something else or issuing new debt on the promise that we're getting this money.
So that's the benefit of having this language here?
It locks it into what we have now and keeps us from issuing new debt on that revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion about the ordinance? Councilman Bowles has asked for a division of the House. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
No.
Sorry, Councilman Wood? Councilman Argo?
No.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilman Reniger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Ah.
Councilman Fink?
Aye, yes.
So the count was five in favor and two against, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it passes. Five, two. Next item is a resolution to adopt the City of Prattville Fiscal Year 2011-2012 General Operating Fund Budget. This was held from our December the 6th, 2011 meeting. Is there any further discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing... Were you opposed?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it down fast enough.
All right. This resolution passes seven oh. Hallelujah. That's an editorial comment, okay? It's the best Christmas present I've ever had. Next item is a resolution to authorize the city attorney to file weeded liens on certain properties sponsored by, oh, it doesn't matter who it sponsored. It was held by December, oh, from the December the 6th meeting. Is there any further discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of passing this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an ambulance contract with Otoga County. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has provided an ambulance service contract to Otoga County in the past, and whereas the county is requesting to amend and extend the present contract agreement as set out in Contract for Services attached here to as Exhibit A, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the contract with Otoga County to provide ambulance services outside the city limits beginning January 1st, 2012, and shall continue thereafter until December 31st, 2014, unless sooner terminated in accordance with the provisions outlined in the contract. Be it further resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize, empower, and instruct the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute said Contract for Services for and on behalf of the City of Prattville and attested by the city clerk. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller, Miller has moved this resolution. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
I'm making motion to hold this for two weeks.
Motion is made to hold by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second? Who's second? Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on the motion to hold? Councilman Miller?
I'll be voting against that motion. I think that I'm comfortable that we need to move forward with this. We postponed it multiple times, and it's time to get this behind us, just like the sales tax and the budget. It may or may not be perfect, but a lot of work has gone into it. I've provided you with periodic updates regarding this. It's a good, solid contract, I think, that is fair and equal to both the city and the county. And lastly, based on my earlier question to the mayor, this is truly a separate business deal, if you will, compared to the Metro Jail. They're two separate negotiations and deals, so to speak. So as chairman of the fire committee, I encourage you to defeat the proposal to hold this, and let's go ahead and get this behind us so we can move on to other things that we need to move on to.
Any further discussion on the motion to hold? Councilman Striplin?
One question. In the information that we're provided tonight, it says the contract's gonna begin on January 1 of 2012. We don't meet between now and January 1 of 2012. Are there any issues of providing service without a contract?
Chief Brown?
No, sir. I believe it would be at this die to cancel the contract we're under already. The only thing that will change come January the 1st is that that old contract is based off the operating cost of the fire department. And the fire department, you know, is, I guess, salary's $600,000 and almost $200,000 operating, and we haven't bought an ambulance for two years, and that's calculated into that contract. So beginning January 1, they will be paying less than what they are now, and we're providing the same service. That's the whole reason I've brought this contract, had Michael Whaley work on it, Dr. Miller, and a lot of us have looked at it and brought it to the mayor as in good stewardship. There's no reason that the City of Prattville should take a hit on providing the same services just because my budget got cut, Mr. Councilman. But it will adjust back, and it'll be on the same contract, and it'll be on January 1 on the old contract. But it continues on till either party, I believe it's 60 days, can cancel one way or the other. But we'll still be under the original contract.
So we'll still respond to the needs of the county?
Yes, sir. That'll be, this council's call.
Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm inclined to support the chair of the fire committee. He's the one closest to this issue. But I do have a question, and that is, and I know the mayor's request is for us to hold until the county can complete its document. If I'm understanding, what you're saying is, it really, it really does not hinge on whether the county has a document. You're asking us to go forward with this document, and you're satisfied that this document is what we need to travel under. Is that correct?
I would defer to chief in terms of, because...
As in the new document, the base, the heart of the contract, it basically sets it like it says, $380,000 a year, a new ambulance at the beginning of the contract. In that three-year period, you know, if you add up the mileage spent out there, you know, we go through an ambulance, 100,000 miles.
Right there. Hope. The percentage of calls outside the city limits of Prattville is what?
Around 30%. That's the guess.
30% of our calls are outside the city limits?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, go right ahead.
And that's, the contract's based on that. It also has a surcharge on fuel. If it rises 10%, we'll keep up with the mileage out there, not even transporting, but both ways. Because sometimes we go out, and it may be a diabetic patient, you push some drugs, and you're in service, and we get nothing out of it. And that's why you have the 300,000, 380,000 to cover that, plus the fees that we receive from the county residents that we transport, so...
And you're satisfied with the document that's before us?
Yes, sir. I am definitely not going against my boss.
I understand.
I'm just trying to advise y'all. I'm trying to advise y'all that you will pay less beginning January the 1st, where the original contract is written, and I am comfortable with the contract that is in hand.
Well, you and I have had several conversations, and one of those conversations was the fact that since, almost one-third of our calls are outside the city limits, which means that our equipment spends one-third of the time outside of this city, traveling county roads. There needs to be some way for us to recoup the wear and tear on our ambulances and on our hoses and everything else that's used. And I'm also in agreement with the chair of the fire committee that the ambulance contract and the Metro Jail contract should travel separately. They are two issues. They are constructed totally different, and I'm gonna be voting against the motion to hold as well. Thank you.
Councilman Bowles?
Will it hurt anything to hold it for two weeks?
If you hold it two weeks, I believe we get into January the...
Fourth, I think.
And it's gotta go to them, you know?
Third.
And it's gotta be on a vote to them and whatever negotiations the mayor has. I'm just advising, January the 1st, we're still in the same contract, and it'll be less money. I mean, that's your department head telling the mayor that. I'm just advising that we'll pay less money coming January the 1st, because it's in the rears. You know what I'm talking about, on the operational cost.
Thank you. One question for the mayor?
Go right there.
When do you see the Contract for Jail Services coming through?
I hope that we'll have it shortly after the 1st of the year. Again, we're waiting on their numbers, and so just...
It sounds to me like maybe they're waiting on our numbers so they can readjust their numbers. Is that maybe what's going on here?
They already have these numbers. They've had these...
So they do have these numbers?
Yes, yes. Actually, like I say, we did do some small negotiating. We did have a different amount, and this is sort of a negotiated amount. I believe District 1, Albert Striplin, was there at some point of the meetings that we had there. But we'll have to wait and see. Hopefully, it'll be right shortly after the 1st of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments on the motion to hold? Seeing none, all those in favor of holding this resolution over to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be January the 3rd, 2012, signify by raising your right hand if you're in favor of it? Any opposition to the hold? I see a five, two. This resolution is properly before us. Any further discussion on this resolution? Councilman Miller?
I don't want to miss an opportunity to tell you how much I appreciate all the work that Chief and Mr. Whaley and other staff in the fire department have put into this, assistance from, I think, HR and finance and others. But I personally observed, and I only saw a fraction of it, not a lot of the behind-the-scenes and the back-of-the-desk work, examples of how much was put into this, researching it, working numbers. We had lots of interaction and, you know, slicing and dicing it and thinking it through in different ways. At the end of the day, still, trying to craft something and hammer out something that I think would be fair and equitable to both the city and the county, and that's the product before you. And I do want to take this opportunity to tell you how much I appreciate all the work that the fire department in particular did on this.
Any further discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? I see none. This resolution is adopted unanimously. Next item is ordinance to amend benefits for the city council, city attorney, city judge, and the city prosecutor. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this ordinance?
Be it ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville that Resolution 2006, Page 51, adopted November 21, 2006. Resolution 2007a, Page 70, adopted December 18, 2007. Resolution 2008, Page 21, adopted October 21, 2008. Resolution 2010-064, adopted September 7, 2010. And Ordinance 2007, Page 34, adopted December 18, 2007, are hereby amended as follows. Be it ordained that the city shall not pay any share of the group health benefits for the council, attorney, judge, or prosecutor of the city. Be it further ordained that the council, attorney, judge, and prosecutor of the city are hereby eligible to continue participating in the city group health, group dental, group life, and any other City of Prattville benefits eligible for payroll deduction. The entire cost of the premium for any benefits selected shall be paid by the official. This ordinance shall become effective, shall not become effective until November 5, 2012. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilor Protem Fink has moved this ordinance. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Miller. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed ordinance? Pardon me? Oh, you're right. By point of order, this will have to carry over to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there's a motion to suspend the ruse. Councilman Miller? Councilman Miller has moved that we suspend the ruse. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the ruse? All those in favor of suspending the ruse, raise your right hand. Any opposition by like sign? The ruse are not suspended, and this ordinance will carry over to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is January the 3rd, 2012. Next item is a resolution to express the intent of the city council to request the City of Prattville to be kept whole within District 88. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville is a recognized and vital component of the economic well-being of the river region, and whereas numerous citizens, local businesses, retail chains, national corporations, along with the City of Prattville, have made significant financial investments in the area, and whereas the 2010 census shows that there is a need to adjust legislative district lines to accommodate changes in population, and whereas Alabama's Permanent Legislative Committee on Reapportionment is presently developing a plan that will redraw the boundary lines of Senate and House districts in the state of Alabama, and whereas the corporate city limits of Prattville, Alabama, which lie within both Otoga and Elmore Counties are presently encompassed entirely within House District 88, and whereas it is generally recognized that citizens and municipalities are best served by one state senator and one state representative, and whereas State Senator Brian Taylor, a resident of the City of Prattville, is a member of the Permanent Legislative Committee on Reapportionment, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville hereby declares that it is in the best interest of its citizens to remain whole within one House and one Senate district. Be it further resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville hereby calls on State Senator Brian Taylor and State Representative Paul Beckman to use their considerable influence and votes in the Alabama Legislature to ensure that the City of Prattville is not reapportioned into two or more districts, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to Senator Taylor and Representative Beckman as evidence of the city council's desire and intent to have the City of Prattville remain entirely within House District 88. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Argo has moved this resolution. Is there a... Councilman Argo has moved this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion pertaining to this resolution? Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted unanimously.
Mr. President, point of personal privilege.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir, I just want to tell Representative Beckman how much I appreciate his efforts on behalf of this resolution. He has already had several meetings with people at the State House, including the Speaker of the House, to let them know of our intentions tonight with this resolution. We, of course, will provide him with a copy that he'll be able to use to take to the Speaker and members of the reapportionment committee, and, and I just want to tell him how much I appreciate his, his representation and his leadership on this issue, and I know that he will give it everything he has to make sure that we remain whole in House District Eighty-eight. Thank you, sir.
Next item on our agenda is a resolution to reappoint Thomas Newton to the Historical Prattville Redevelopment Authority Board. Councilman Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority Board due to the term expiration of Thomas Newton on November first, two thousand and eleven, and whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Thomas Newton is hereby reappointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on November first, two thousand and seventeen, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. So moved, Mr. President.
Councilman Striplin has moved this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fink, is there any discussion pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to appoint Matt Holster, is that correct? Holster, to the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority Board. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this resolution, please?
My pleasure, sir. Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority Board due to the resignation of Albert Striplin on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven, and whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Matt Holster is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on November one, two thousand and seventeen, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Argo has moved this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fink, is there any discussion pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to appoint Ed Rouse to the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority Board. Councilman Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Historic Prattville Redevelopment Authority Board due to the term expiration of Beverly Stewart, Stock Styer, on November first, two thousand and eleven, and whereas it is the desire of Prattville City Council to fill the vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Edward Ross is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on November first, two thousand and seventeen, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. I so move.
Councilman Bowes has moved this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wood, is there any discussion pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify... Councilman Argo?
No, I was ready to vote.
Oh, you're ready to vote, okay. All those in favor of this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Wasn't the trigger a little early on there, Councilman Argo? Next item is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign all agreements and assurances regarding a two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, thirty-dollar grant by Alabama Emergency Management Agency for acquisition and removal of flood-prone properties. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas in two thousand and nine, the City of Prattville applied for a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant available with the Federal Disaster Declaration eighteen thirty-five, and whereas a two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand-and-thirty-dollar grant has been suballocated by the Alabama Emergency Management Agency, AEMA, to the city for the acquisition and removal of three flood-prone properties in the city limits, and whereas this grant is available to the city upon payment of twenty-five percent in matching funds in the amount of eighty-nine thousand and ten dollars, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized and direct to enter into an agreement as well, execute any future documents with AEMA necessary for the implementation of Hazard Mitigation Grant number eighteen thirty-five dash zero-zero-one-one. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville authorizes the expenditure of eighty-nine thousand and ten dollars with funds being paid from the general fund. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller has moved this resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Argo.
Make the motion, we suspend the rules.
We do not need to suspend the rules. This is a budgeted item, and it's in the budget that we passed earlier in the agenda. Hallelujah.
I withdraw.
What are you pointing at?
To be recognized.
Yes, sir.
That because you passed the budget, you need to change it, coming from the general fund, to Planning Department Miscellaneous Contract Services.
So it needs to be amended?
Yes, sir. And then on your next one, needs to come from Planning Department Dilapidated House Demolition.
What line was that on the next one?
Forty. It's gonna be line forty, delete General Fund and put Planning Department Dilapidated House Demolition. And this one's from... This one's from the Planning Department Miscellaneous Contract Services.
Do we need to introduce an amendment on this one, because we can read it in properly in the next one?
Correct, so amendment on the one before you, yes.
Okay. Do we introduce that? Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce an amendment on line thirty-three to state with funds being paid from Planning Department Miscellaneous Contract Services. So moved.
Councilman Miller has moved for this amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fink, any discussion on the proposed amendment? Councilman Bowes?
Um, there's a, I know I have several in my district that are flood-prone, uh, gonna get flooded every time it rains. Councilman Miller has some. What, three houses are these?
Mr. Duke?
Yes, sir. We, in the wake of the, the two thousand and nine flood, we submitted several applications for, for approval, and all of them had to go through the, the FEMA test for cost-benefit analysis, or cost-benefit analysis to determine whether or not they were eligible. The, the three that came back, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the exact address in Allenville, there's one on Allenville Road, there's eighteen-ten Browerwood Street, and then I believe the other one is eleven-sixty Cooper Avenue. And if I've got that wrong, I'll correct that with the clerk, so it's correct in the minutes. Yes, sir.
Further discussion of the proposal, then, Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While you're up here, George, just a couple of questions. They say the grant is available upon twenty-five percent matching. What is the turnaround time on, once we do our part? What is the turnaround time for receiving those grant funds?
Generally, it's thirty, forty days from, from EMA, once they process our request for reimbursement.
Thank you.
It's a pretty quick process.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I, I would like to say that, that in, under similar declarations and FEMA grants available, there were two families in my district that were, were able to, to, we were able to remove their homes from the flood area, and they were able to relocate, one relocated in my district and another relocated in Mr. Striplin's district. And I have to say that if there is anything that we can do as a council or a body to help a family in need, it is this type of a program, because when a home is continually flooded and a family is facing the loss of their, all their belongings, time after time after time, something's gotta be done, and this is a great opportunity for us to do that, and I, I appreciate Mr. Duke, all of his hard work, although those were done several years ago, I, I do count those among some of the, the best things that we've been able to do for the citizens of Prattville, so I encourage the council to move forward with this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? All those in favor of adopting the amendment signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? The amended resolution is properly before us, is there any further discussion on the amended resolution? All those in favor of adopting the amended resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Resolution number twelve, to authorize the demolition of structure at ten-eight-five South Memorial Drive at a cost of seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Councilman Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas under the authority of Title XI, Chapter fifty-three B of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, as amended, the Prattville Planning Department declared the structures at ten-eight-five South Memorial to be unsafe and a public nuisance, and whereas on October twentieth, two thousand and eleven, the Prattville Planning Department ordered the demolition of the structures at ten-eight-five South Memorial Drive by December seventh, two thousand and eleven, and whereas the Prattville Planning Department ordered the delivery of the certified mail to the last-known property owner and to all parties having interest in the property, and whereas no appeal to the Planning Department orders were received by the city clerk within the prior required time by Title XI, Chapter fifty-three B, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the structures located at ten-eight-five South Memorial Drive is unsafe and a public nuisance, that must be repaired or demolished as instructed by the Prattville Planning Department ordered. Be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized and instructed to remove the unsafe structures at ten-eight-five South Memorial Drive, and shall present the City Council with a detailed list of the cost of removal. Be it further resolved that the contract in amount of seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is awarded to Scotty's Flooring Covering, said funds shall be authorized from the Planning Department Housing Development Fund, is that right? Did I say that correctly? Dilapidated planning house, the dilapidated, the Planning Department...
Dilapidated house.
Okay, sorry, guys, Planning Department Dilapidated House Demolition. I left out dilapidated. I so move.
Mr. Bowes has moved this resolution, is there a second? Second by Councilman Fink, is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Before this meeting, I was advised by our legal counsel, Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Didn't mean to steal your thunder, but items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are no longer necessary with the adoption of the budget, so I therefore make a motion that Resolution thirteen, Resolution fourteen, and Resolution fifteen, authorizing overtime payments by the Police Department, be tabled indefinitely.
Second.
Councilman Argo has moved that we postpone indefinitely, items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fink, any discussion on this proposal? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, all three items are postponed indefinitely. That exhausts our agenda, at this time, we will open up the floor for comments from those present on any item that you'd like to address, any business item you'd like to address with the City Council. Is there anyone that would like to address the City Council this evening? Mr. Gray?
I'm Allison Gray, I live at sixteen ninety-eight Old Country Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor Gillespie, Mr. President, members of the council. There are some things that I would like to address that occurred at the last meeting. First, I want to thank Mr. Fink for his integrity and his straightforwardness in addressing me by name when he was upset with me, I appreciate that. I don't live in the city limits. I spend a lot of money in this city. I, I think there's some misunderstanding on how I feel about some of the decisions that y'all have made in the past, with the shopping centers out on, in, in East Prattville, and I'm really glad that we have those. I don't want anybody to think that I'm against what the City Council did with that, because I'm not. I'm glad that we have them, and I spend a lot of money out there. I've been in every one of those shops probably five or six times in the last four days alone, not counting the rest of the year, so I'm glad that we have them, and I'm glad that I don't have to go to Montgomery, and I'm really glad that Montgomery comes over here. So, when I say that y'all got us into this mess and you need to fix it, I don't mean to me, to be demeaning or insulting, I would never do that. Mr. Argo got upset with me at the last meeting and made some statements that I would like to address. One of them was that some of the citizens get up here and complain, they want to shake your hand, one hand, and slap you with the other one. Well, all of y'all know me well enough to know that you don't have to wonder where you stand with me, I'm gonna tell you. And I don't shake hands and slap. What I do is kick your rear, and it's anatomically impossible for me to shake your hand and do that at the same time at my age. So, that's an impossibility. And he also said that we come up here and complain, and we don't come with solutions, and that's just not true, we do come with solutions. You may not agree with our solutions, but we do get up here and tell you what we think, which is what I did at the last meeting, and I was disgusted, thoroughly disgusted. This is the best meeting I've been to in a long time, but it took you four months to pass the budget. That's one-third of the year. That is ridiculous, and that's what I got up and told you. And I should have the right to be able to do that without fear of being attacked by a city councilman at the end of the meeting when he gets to speak and I don't get to counter. So I have a problem with that, Mr. Argo. I hate getting up here to talk, because I get so nervous. I, I owned a business in this city for twelve years. I redid four buildings in the historic district, I served on numerous committees, I was president of Prattville Downtown Unlimited for two years, so don't tell me that I come in here and complain and that I'm not willing to do anything about it, because that's just not the case. I have been more than willing to do something about it, and I've worked very hard in the past to do that. And maybe you think that when you do that, that it'll keep us from getting up here and speaking our minds, and at the last meeting, I was pretty disgusted and decided that I'm, I'm just through, I've had it, but your little speech at the end did absolutely nothing but strangle... But your little speech at the end did absolutely nothing but strengthen my resolve. I will be at nearly every meeting if it's at all possible for me to be at. I'm not the first person you've done that to. In six meetings before this one, the first two, you were absent. The first meeting, you attacked a gentleman who got up and said that he disagreed with when you changed your vote on liquor license for a business on 31 at that shopping center. I don't know the name of it, where Foster Drugs is. He had the right to get up here and tell you that without somebody jumping down his throat after it was over with. The next meeting, you did the same thing to the mayor. The meeting after that, you did it to Mr. Bowles.
Ms. Allison.
And last week, you did it to me. Yes, sir?
Let's keep our comments pertaining to the business of the council not directed toward an individual councilman. If y'all have a personal disagreement or a problem, please address it after the council lady.
Okay. Then I'll address it to all the councilmen. All the council members need to know, Mr. Argo was the most vocal, so yes, I was talking to him, and he's the one that made the statements. So I was talking to him. But if all of you need to listen, fine, listen. We need to be able to get up here, and this is the only forum that we have, is to get up here and tell you what we think. And I realize that I don't live in this city, but don't tell me this is not my city. Make no mistake about it, gentlemen, this is my city, too. I shop here. I'm a member of the Y. My church is here. Everything I do is in this city. I know my five minutes is up. I can always tell when you roll your eyes over the top of my head. But I do appreciate, I really do appreciate the hard work that you all do, and I know that it's not easy. I just want you to understand that when we get up here and speak, it's not easy, and we need to be able to do it without fear of somebody attacking us or trying to intimidate us or to keep us from doing it again. I'm through. You got any questions?
I'm just about to ask. Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Gray? Questions or comments?
Thank you, ma'am.
Sit down. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Brand. Good evening.
My question has to do with the past budget. Since there's been several different budgets that have been before the council, I'm unclear as to which of those budgets you passed. Where can I find it? Is that it?
Give you a copy right there.
Oh, okay.
I can tell you that it assumes 0% growth. That was one of the compromises that the mayor and the council came to, and there are a few other minor adjustments, but it's all right there in that document, and that should, it is on the website, right?
Is it under a particular label on the website? Is there certain words you should look for on the website to find this budget?
Whenever you get on the city page, you can see proposed budget on it.
If you go to the government section, you'll be on the city government page, look in the right hand menu and all the budgets available.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's several budgets headings up there. Which one is this one?
It says hybrid.
Yes, it says hybrid.
It says hybrid. Okay, when the words, it's a hybrid proposed budget, that's the one we'll be looking for.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Commissioner.
I had no idea that the ambulance service was on the agenda tonight, so that's great. I just want to thank you. I want to thank you. We know this service is outstanding. I've worked with all these guys for many years, and they can't be beat. So we thank you.
Well, we thank you for your service as our county commissioner. You're my county commissioner, and thank you, and Merry Christmas to you.
Ms. Thompson, if you would come.
Councilman Wood.
Why are you up here? I just want to say something that a lot of people may not know. First of all, I served with her, and to all of you that get to come down here and voice your opinion, that's a wonderful thing. And one of the reasons that you're able to do it, and I just thought I would bring this out and applaud you and salute you, I put forth a resolution to have night meetings. When I came to this council, we were meeting in the day. And because of Ms. Sid Thompson and two other council members along with myself, she was a part of that group that voted to have council meetings, and I want to thank you again for that service. And that's the reason that you all are able to be here at night, because of her along with a couple of more people. Thank you so much, Ms. Thompson. Thank you.
Further comments for the commissioner? Any further comments for the commissioner? Anyone else like to address the city council this evening? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
I kind of do, but you already said I can't direct anything at any one council member.
I would prefer that you not. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, my name is Daniel Stice. I live at 1189 East Main Street.
Yes, sir.
I own two local businesses here in Prattville.
Thank you, sir.
And I did kind of want to say to Councilman Argo, is it my understanding that you want the one penny to continue for three months and then the half penny for the rest of the nine months?
No, sir. The one penny would continue the rest of this fiscal year. It would begin again on October 1, 2012, and go until December 31, 2012. On January 1, 2013, it would drop to a half cent and go through the remainder of that fiscal year, ending on September 30 of 2013.
That's what I wanted clarified, because you said that the next governmental body should be weaned off of the financial problems that you created.
No, sir. That's not what I said. But that's okay.
Well, that's how I see it. You say that they shouldn't have that cushion, but yet you helped create that problem. You've been on the council for how long?
15 years and two months.
So our financial problems are kind of your fault?
I take every bit of the blame.
Then why shouldn't the next body have a little bit of cushion to fix what you created?
The next body is free to adopt its own sales tax. I choose not to vote for a sales tax. I believe they're regressive, and I believe that they hurt the poorest among us, and I will not vote for a sales tax. But thank you for asking.
Okay, okay. That clarifies it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the council at this time? Okay. At this time, I'm going to grant a point of personal privilege to Councilman Argo. Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, with all due respect, I would ask that we go ahead and have the mayor's report, and then the council give its reports, and then I would like to ask for my point of personal privilege.
Yes, sir. Will certainly do that. Mayor, do you have a closing report?
Not necessarily a report, but just a comment is pretty much is, thank you, gentlemen, whereas we don't always agree. That is one of the great things about America, that we can still come together and try to work a solution, work toward a solution for whatever problem it might be before us, and I look like we have made some progress here tonight, and look forward to working with you guys for the remainder of this quadrillion, and hope that everybody has a very Merry Christmas and a safe New Year. And just one last reminder, though, is that our budget hearings will start in the middle of July, but have a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Councilman Striplin.
No report.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to take the opportunity to thank everyone for being here. Thank the city employees for all that you do. I thank the Lord for allowing me to serve you, serve these citizens for many years. I really appreciate it. I'm here, I'm trying to do what's in the best interest of the city. I will continue to do that. I pray God bless upon each and every one of you during the Christmas holidays, and Godspeed. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilman Miller?
Yes, I would echo Councilman Wood's sentiments and say that I hope everybody has a real safe, happy, warm holiday season, and remember the reason for Christmas, and spend time with family and with faith. So Merry Christmas to everybody.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes, sir. I would like to just wish everybody in the audience and Prattville Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. Let's not forget the reason for the season, which is our Lord Jesus Christ, and if it wasn't for Him, it'd all be for naught. Y'all have a good Christmas.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, sir. I would like to ask that the mayor consider moving that budget hearing to June. That would give us three months. We're sitting here three months kind of from the time, and it would give us ample opportunity, I think, to make sure we did have a budget passed. Just casual observation, if we can do that, that'd be great. Just back it up a little bit, give us more time, so we won't have to potentially pass an emergency resolution, and we can roll into the fiscal year the way I know we've done in the past. The, I guess the last thing is, you know, the city employees, you guys are the backbone of what we accomplish here on a day-to-day basis. It has been a long, drawn-out process. I feel like we've kind of been going through this. I don't know if we ever really did stop a budget process since this, or what, September of last year almost. Seems like we've been going through it constantly. I would like to personally extend a safe and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to each and every one of you gathered here, and even those that could not be here. And I would also like to especially remember some of those dear in our lives that we've lost during the course of this year as well.
Before I grant Councilman Argo's point of privilege, I do have a few comments. First of all, I prayed for a Christmas gift, and this council chose to grant that gift. We moved forward with the sales tax extension and adopted a budget tonight. That's a great Christmas gift for the Renninger family. I hope you'll consider it a great gift for the city of Prattville. Would like to extend my appreciation to every employee of the city of Prattville. This is the legislative process as it works. Sometimes it's painfully slow. Glad, I'm glad it's over. I'm sorry if it caused you any pain or anxiety. I would like to wish each and every one of you a very Merry Christmas, and may God bless each and every one of you. Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. First of all, I would like to address some comments that were aimed at me tonight, and that's perfectly fine. As the gentleman pointed out, I've served on the council for quite some time, so I'm easy fodder when it comes to some of the decisions that I've made, so I accept that. I do want to say something to Ms. Gray, since she called me by name. I did not call her by name. It's unfortunate that she felt as though they were aimed at her, but, you know, I can't help that. But what I can say is that it's amazing to me that individuals will come to this mic, and they say that's the only opportunity that they have to address this council. Ms. Gray, you and I have been friends for a long time. My phone is in the phone book, my email is published in the Prattville Progress, and if you have something you need to take up with me, you can do it with me privately. But you chose in a public forum to attack me, and I'm supposed to be quiet and accept it and take it. You're exactly right. Over the last couple of weeks, I have prayed for peace for people who attacked me personally, and I've accepted that God has granted me that peace. So feel free, it's a shame that we have to end our friendship like that, but that's okay. I accept that, too. The council is elected by the citizens of the city of Prattville to represent them as the best as they can. I've done that to the best of my ability, I believe. I do regret some of the decisions that I've made, but you know what? Over 15 and a half years, I believe that the majority of the decisions I've made, I made for the right reasons. And I accept everything that is wrong with this city. I take that on my shoulders, although I am only one of seven votes, but that's okay, too. Now to the council and my point of personal privilege. I want to thank each of you for the work that you've done over this last year on this budget. Passing tonight's budget and getting this city back on a solid financial footing was yeoman's work. And again, I thank you for being committed to that work. You know, my daughter Cassie was a little more than two years old when I first ran for council in 1996. A couple of weeks ago, she turned 18. She was accepted by Troy and the University of Alabama as a freshman student for next fall. Most of you here have watched her grow up into a beautiful and responsible young lady. My son Joshua just turned 10. He's involved in every sport known to man. Over the last 15 years or so, I don't think I've missed much of either of my children's lives. Unfortunately, because of my work responsibilities here and in my full-time job, I've missed some milestones and some events along the way. For that, I deeply apologize to my children and to my wife, Paula. They have freely and without complaint allowed me to be away from them so that I could serve the constituents of District 3 and the citizens of Prattville, and for that, I am deeply grateful. As you know, my responsibilities at the Department of Post-Secondary Education have increased over the last year. The 2012 legislative session is a little more than a month away, and my schedule will only become more hectic. Cassie's getting ready to go off to college. Joshua's interest in athletics is growing each and every day, and I desperately want to be an active and involved father. Over this last year, it's become more and more difficult for me to juggle four times four full-time jobs, being a father, a husband, a state employee, and a councilperson. One, and sometimes more, of those jobs has been relegated to a part-time status, and sadly, that isn't fair to those that I love or those that I serve. Therefore, Mr. President, I hereby tender my resignation effective Saturday, December 31, 2011. For 15 years and three months, I have been honored to serve as the city council representative for Municipal District 3. 10 of those years, I was privileged to serve as your president. For that, I thank the wonderful and kind citizens of my district, and I thank each of you. To my fellow city employees, it has been a true joy to serve with you and to watch the professional and caring way that each of you have provided services to the citizens of this great city, and I thank you for that. To my friends on the dais and here tonight, you know that I love politics way too much to go home. I plan to continue in several ways to be a part of this city moving forward, whether it's by attending city council meetings and sitting right next to Ms. Gray, or whether it's serving in an ad hoc capacity, or participating in the upcoming elections, or assisting you when you feel it's necessary to call on me. I've invested my life in this community. I love Prattville, and I want our city to prosper so that my children can one day raise their families here. To my friends here tonight and to all of Prattville, please know that I count my service to District 3, the city of Prattville, and the friendships that I've gained over the last 15 years to be some of the greatest blessings that God has given to me. My wish to you on this dais and for each one of you and your families that are here today is that you have a very Merry Christmas, and that each of you continue to seek God's wisdom and guidance in every decision that you make. May God bless you as much as He has blessed me and my family, and God bless the city of Prattville. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselman Argo, as president of the city council of Prattville, I am going to reluctantly, very reluctantly, accept your resignation effective the end of this month. I want to express my appreciation, first of all, for your friendship, for your dedicated service to the people of the city of Prattville over this fifteen-plus years. You and I came to office at exactly the same time. I didn't know you at the time, you didn't know me, but we forged a very, very strong friendship very early, and that friendship will continue no matter where we are or what we are doing. We love you and your family, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
That being said, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can't we, the rest of us, say something?
Pardon me?
Can we say something about that?
So, move.
Move for adjournance, or second?
No, we won't see Dean again on this dais. Would we please have an opportunity to say some words?
Do you want a point of privilege?
Whatever you call it.
If you would like a point of privilege, Councilman Miller, by all means, go right ahead.
Yeah, the rest of you that are anxious to get out of here, bye. I want to say that this not only gets a shock and catches us off-guard, but I'll echo Councilman Renninger's sentiments, that I have learned an incredible amount from you. I've watched you, you know, in a variety of settings, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the dedication and the commitment and the hard work. Any one of the seven of us, or we collectively, or we the seven with the mayor, it's not a perfect world, and our decisions are not always perfect, but we do not go into a lot of the decisions lightly. You know, we try to consider what all the factors are when we arrive at a decision, and I've watched you sort of through that process. You're kind of a four-year cycle ahead of me, so you sort of have served in a role along with Councilman Wood in terms of mentoring and guiding and shaping and being role models in a lot of ways, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that. I, too, have been dealing with, you know, job responsibilities that have expanded, so I think I can especially relate to some of the issues that you face, and you can only slice the pie so many ways. And so, I applaud you for having the courage to do this and do what you think is right by yourself, your family, your job, and your city. And I just can't tell you how much I've valued a special part of my life, and it's to have you as a role model and a fellow councilman and a friend.
Would anyone else like a point of privilege? Councilman Boes?
Counselman Argo, I have to say that my time up here, I know I've been a little bit of thorn in your side, but I really, I got to say, I really appreciate, iron sharpens iron, and you've taught me so much, and I don't like yes people being around me. I like somebody who's going to come straight forward, tell me how it is, set me straight. And I've made a commitment that I talked to you earlier this year about. I'm keeping it. And I really, really appreciate what you've done for me over the last three years, the way you've trained me, and I know the public, what they see going on up here, they don't understand behind the scenes. But Counselman Argo, really, he's probably taught me more than anybody on this board, and it's because you don't back down. And I've always admired you and appreciated that fact of you, because I don't need people in my business life that are going to be yes men. I want somebody to tell me the God-honest truth, and I feel like you've always done that for me. We've not agreed on everything, but that's why you have seven of us. And your points have always been very, very clear, precise, most of the time are correct, sometimes not, but we'll leave it at that. But in all sincerity, I really do appreciate what you've done for me. You've shown me so much, you've taught me so much, you've led me very well, you led this council very well. And one thing I have to say about you, you are a leader, and not a lot of people are leaders. And it's a God-given gift, and you ought to thank God every day for that ability. Thank you for what you've done.
Mayor?
Well, thank you. After following, you know, you three, it's really not a lot left to say, but just a little history lesson here is that besides District One and District Two, the rest of you guys I had never met before I became an elected official or had started running for council, and where since I was elected, you have showed me the way quite a bit. I appreciate what you have done for me, and I do know the, some of the struggles that we all go through, because unless you have sat, run for office, got elected, and sat up in, at the earth as dais, it is a very difficult job. Sometimes things seem so easy, but a lot of times, I know that we all have struggled with some of our decisions, and recent at a council meeting, I know I was told that there was no crying in this arena. Well, you know what? It's, sometimes it's not bad to cry, and I will be crying to see you leave. I was hoping that we would work out the quadrinium together, but I most certainly understand your reasons, your rationale behind it, and anything that I can do to help you and your family along, please let me know.
Anyone else on the council? Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I don't accept that resignation. In all sincerity, Mr. Argo, thank you for the service you've given. I think I was here when you got here, so that mean I'm a senior citizen now. Thank the Lord for that. I want to tell you and your family, you know, that I pray God blessings upon you, and the only thing I want to say to anyone that's sitting out there, that he's served well, and we've all, I believe, have served well. We made mistakes, but see, none of us are Jesus, though. That's the good thing, see, because, you know, we'll let it rain on one person all the time, but he doesn't. It's hard to govern here. Out there, sometimes it seems it's really easy, but he's offered someone an opportunity now to see what it's like to really govern. Thank you for what you've done, and I hope someone can truly come up here and fill those shoes and govern. Thank you for what you've done. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Councilman Fink?
Yes, one thing I will say, Dean, we had lunch together yesterday, and you didn't even tell me yesterday, so I would have at least bought the fried chicken yesterday if you would have told me that. I do want to extend my sincere appreciation and thanks to you as well. I knew you years before I became elected to this council. You were a dear friend before. You will continue to be a very close, dear friend and confidant, and I thank you for I guess, you know, I can remember the first time I got sworn in up here, and you were thanking your family, and I remember you thanking your mother-in-law. Yes, I'm sorry, I have to bring this up, because you said that she ironed your underwear, I believe, and I'm not sure Paula has forgiven you for that yet, but I think Paula needs to smile for that one. I, I mean, I'm a little speechless for it, some of that, the segue there. A lot of people don't realize, but your family serves up here with you, and the things that happen, the comments that get made, they cut deep, and they get, they cut personal, and people don't see it sometimes. It's hard when you're not up here, and tonight, for example, your children are out there, and they're hearing the things that are being said to you. And I applaud you for the decorum you have, the professionalism, and your ability to take it, because it does get very personal, and you handle yourself with the utmost class and professionalism, and I thank you for the friendship you have bestowed upon me. And I thank your family for allowing you to be able to serve with me as well. Thank you.
Councilman Strickland?
Dean, I appreciate the opportunity to have served with you and for the opportunity to express personally and privately what you've meant, and publicly, I think all that's left to be said is thank you from all aspects.
Counselman Argo has moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fink and Miller. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition by a like sign, we are adjourned.